Good evening, everyone. If you're watching this, you're watching the Board of Selectmen's meeting for the town of Halifax for Tuesday.
We're not in 11 yet.
September. Today is the 22nd, right?
Yes.
Yes, it is the 22nd. We're going to start our meeting as we usually do in our formal meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to try to do some regular business. We'll start with the agenda for tonight. Does anyone have anything to add?
No, I'm good.
We're good? Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes for the regular session, August 20, 2020, and the regular session, September 3rd, 2020. Is everybody comfortable with them?
I didn't read the 3rd.
Okay, we can hold the 3rd for our next meeting. Can I get a meeting? Can I get any?
I've moved that we accept the regular session meeting, August 20, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Garrett, it's you.
I've moved to approval of the following warrants and commitments. School warrant number 23 for $115,942.25.
Yep.
Payroll warrant number 24 for $364,138.35. Vindication warrant number 25 for $316,977.84. And withholding warrant number 26 for $132,884.81. And avalanche commitments for $110,924.68.
So I can second accept for the payroll warrant number 536, 537, 538, 541, and 551. I have to accuse myself of those.
I can second the others that were left out.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the affirmed approval of the following selectmen's bills. Halifax Postmasters, 400 forever stamps, $220.
Second.
I move the approval of the following warrant and commitment. Vindication warrant number 27 for $421,626.13.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the approval of the selectmen's bills dated September 22nd. Selectmen's expense, Mass Municipal Association, $50. Town report, Harry B. Hardy and his son, $624.90. Town hall electricity, National Grid, $883.72. And that completes the presentation.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to general mail. Do you want to pick that up, Charlie?
Well, you get the recycling abatements first.
Okay.
Anything weird?
Okay, so this is the idea, you guys list, okay?
Oh, okay, yep.
So these ones, and then there's one even in your folder, just one. You got one to take about when you're in the issue. So that, that one's fine. This is immigrants' ballot. That we should.
Okay. So we are at 12, Tom. We're at 12.
We're now at 12 people in the room.
13.
We can only have 11, so I'm going to ask for a motion to reconvene across the street at the all-purpose room at the school.
Do you need a time?
15 minutes.
Sure. So 6:20.
At 6:20, I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor? All right, thank you.
So for the folks who are here for various appointments, our apologies, but they're under the state law, there's a limitation of 11 people in this room at any one time under the COVID protocols for gatherings. We're going to be moving over to what's called the all-purpose room over at the elementary school to continue the meeting. If you're facing the school, they're, it's jutting out in the middle of the school, there's an entrance there. We'll be meeting in there in about 15 minutes.
Yeah, I think we're, we're ready to reconvene.
Tom, I'd recommend, since Dennis is already here, I know we have appointments and obviously we have delays, but.
Right.
So what Dennis is here to meet with you about is the possibility of a quorum for tonight's session of the town meeting. Under state law, the board can do that with the approval of the town moderator on a temporary basis for the state of emergency. They can do that in between sessions, could do it during the meeting itself, but in between sessions of the meeting or in between sessions at this point. Under state law, the quorum can be lowered down to 10% of the number that is in our town bylaw, so all the way down to 10. I'm not necessarily recommending that, but Dennis is here to discuss that matter with the three of you. As for myself, I have mixed emotions about it. On the one hand, I don't care to lower the quorum. On the other hand, there's reasons that are valid to, to make some kind of an adjustment. Not to mention the $6,000 that cost per meeting. For the equipment to be able to use two rooms because we can't get everybody into one room. Having said that part, nobody's preventing anybody from coming to town meeting. It's just setting a limit that we can operate under. The other part of it is, a lowered quorum gives us the opportunity to continue a town meeting, depending on where you set, set a lower number. There's always going to be controversy about it, but nobody's preventing anybody from coming to town meeting. Nobody's standing at the door saying, "You can't come in because we've reached quorum." That's not the case. Again, I still have mixed emotions about it. I just assume hears from everybody else to see what their thoughts are.
See where tonight goes.
The problem is you cannot lower it during the meeting.
I want to hear from the board first, clear.
The last time we tried to lower a quorum, almost 300 people showed up to vote it down, and then they left early and we didn't have a quorum. You know, there are a bunch of reasons. Right now, a town that can't function properly until we have this town meeting and pass their articles, that's the only thing. I personally would like to have the whole town vote on it, but we can't get enough people in to vote. Then we need to do something in order to make sure the town continues to operate. So like, like Tom, I have mixed feelings on it, but at the same time, necessity, I think fix and prepare on it if we do something at this point.
My thoughts are that I would consider moving it for the financial issues, but any zoning or anything else, I don't think we should lower the quorum on. Just, I think that, that brings up the most contentious articles, especially with the two that are on the warrant. I think it would make sense to, if we, if we don't have the 100 quorum, that we move to pass over.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a problem passing through. Charlie?
Yeah, just on the illicit discharges, EPA is requiring us to do that as part of our stormwater rights, so I can't recommend that you pass over it at this meeting. I don't have any problem with the other two articles you're mentioning, I assume the marijuana and the multifamily, but you need to get the illicit discharges done.
Can I ask for clarification, because I just missed a piece of this? It sounded like you were talking about a quorum being required for some issues but not others?
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
Well, I, I think I was saying that I wouldn't adjust the quorum below our annual 100. If we don't have the 100 in the room, I would like the board to move to pass over those articles.
Just so that you know, my intention was going to be to pass over the zoning articles for a lot of reasons. I don't think we're ready for it. I think there's some legislation pending that may affect it. I think it gives us the winter to take another look at it and bring it forward next year if it looks like we should do it. So for whatever that's worth, my intention tonight was to move to pass over those two articles, probably zoning articles, but not the illicit discharge article, because that has to be taken care of. And I don't think that's controversial in any of it.
Well, so, can I make, can I make a motion that we, can I make a motion in our selectmen's meeting that we?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so I would make a motion that we both to pass over the marijuana article and the multifamily zoning article. I don't know the numbers.
I'd second that.
There's enough description there.
You have motive here.
So by doing, what you're going to do is recommend that the board is.
Motion to pass over.
Yeah, recommend the motion to pass over. So then we're on board. Troy, how do you have your feelings on that?
I just wasn't telling business to be taken care of. Suppose that, passing all those articles expedite things to make it a little better so that it takes us to accomplish and forward.
I think they're contentious and they're confusing, and I think it would be impossible to try to explain to everybody at a town meeting what's involved in them. Frankly, I'm not all that sure I like what we ended up with anyway, so I think it gives everybody an opportunity to take another look at them, wait for the legislation if it happens, see how that affects our thinking on them, and try to vet it. I mean, nobody comes to the hearings, that's unfortunate. It would be a lot easier if the hearings were well-attended, that people could disseminate some knowledge about the particular articles as opposed to trying to explain to everybody at the town meeting what's going on over the course of six months. And there isn't anything more difficult to explain than zoning articles. So for all those reasons, I, I think we should pass over. So we, I'm sorry.
Would you like to, not even if the quorum, if we hit quorum, you still like to pass over, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any further questions? I think we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right. So we will recommend to pass over.
It still goes back to.
Let's get back to the forum. Dennis, do you have some thoughts?
Yes. I, I, at the risk of being overly critical, this town, the last number of years, has developed some real, I would say significant problems in the way we're conducting our business. And to be honest with you, I think everybody is responsible for pieces of it, and I don't think the town meeting is the place where those things are going to get resolved. I don't know exactly how some of those things get resolved, but the way we're communicating, the way we're approaching things, we're kicking the can down the road a lot of times when we should be trying to figure out what it is we should be doing. I think in the short run, it makes sense to do something like you just did. If it's too controversial, it hasn't been thought out, you pull items off the table until they can be discussed and people can have input. More than anything, I hear from our residents of our town that they want to be heard, they want a process that's reasonable, that is respectful, and not everyone feels treated that way. In the case of the quorum, it is a challenging issue, because in the short run, to lower a quorum feels like you are potentially cutting people out from participating. It was pointed out earlier, and it makes sense to me, that says just because you lower the quorum, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't be welcoming and wanting as many people as could be reasonably fit in our meeting. I mean, right now, under the pandemic, everything is more challenged, especially the numbers. You know, welcoming more people than 132, I think I heard, means that we'd have to shut down the meeting because of safety issues. So on the one hand, we want a robust quorum, we want a robust participation, but under the pandemic, we have to be careful about not necessarily exceeding that, otherwise there goes another $6,000 and another reconvening. And when people, here's the other side of the quorum issue that bothers me. I understand the concern about lowering a quorum, and I don't propose any reduction in it without recognizing that it might send certain wrong messages to people. But the other side of it is, those, let's say 80 to 90 people who came for town meeting, came to do the business of the town, have to be sent home without doing the business and finishing it because someone calls a quorum. They're within their rights to do that, but, and, and no one has to give a reason. But I would suggest to you, I know I felt frustrated, I recognize that having the meeting in Kingston was a logistical problem, and that many people felt uncomfortable with that. It was a logistic necessity because there weren't space, wasn't space available. So my suggestion, and I want to make it clear, we're talking about a temporary reduction in quorum at this point, correct? Because that's the law.
It's, it's only good for the state of emergency.
Okay. Because on the other side of it, I would want to be clear, that it's certainly my intention as town moderator to encourage people to, to participate. So the issue then becomes, do we reduce it in order to make sure we can get the business of the town done and move that forward and do it in a reasonable way? Part of me suggests that, you know, the 10% thing is ridiculous. I think the optics of reducing the quorum down to 10 is just insane, and I don't, I don't feel good about that as a town resident, and I don't think anybody else would. Reducing it to 50 has been suggested, 75 is a compromise. I think wherever you reduce it to though, it has to be reasonable in the sense of it shouldn't be one or two people determining that we're just going to shut everything else down. I just don't think that helps. So I guess my recommendation would be if it's a, if this is a one-time issue for, for this period of time, for this town meeting, I'm recommending that we should consider reducing the quorum, but not to do it to such a way to send the wrong message. So I'm, I'm on the fence about it. I, my, me personally, would only reduce it to 75, just to send the right message. Some people may think, well, we might start with 80, and then, next thing you know, we're down to 74, and someone calls the quorum. I'd like to think that there's enough people invested in moving town meeting forward that they would appreciate it not being reduced to an unreasonable level. But, but at that point, with that input from me as a town moderator, and I recognize, I feel like I'm just a citizen, and I happen to be elected to town moderator, it doesn't give me any more push or pull other than what it does in the bylaws and, and what the state is allowing. So I don't feel comfortable overexercising that, but I would be curious, with what I've just said, what you as selectmen now think about a reduction. Would a reduction to 75 meet a reasonable level of being reasonable to, so that we can keep, conduct the business of the town, but not send too wrong a message to the residents that we don't, we don't want to discourage them from coming? I, you know, I'd be curious what you think.
I'll ask a question. Are there any other articles, Dennis, that we have that needed two-thirds besides the stormwater?
I think there are, there were four originally that, that needed, and it was.
Stormwater is not zoning, so it doesn't require two-thirds, just a simple majority.
And then the stabilization of which?
Which we already passed over.
Right, so articles that were on there for two-thirds are off or will be off.
We may very well get 100 people, and that part of it could be moot, because it is closer, logistically more possible. But to your point about ending town meeting abruptly is a concern. To your point again, you know, if you get 80 people that show up, or 85 people that show up and want to do business, you know, how many times do you send these folks home before they don't come back?
Yeah, I, I would suggest that us convening town meeting to just shut it down or having it shut down prematurely isn't helping with those people who have routinely and regularly come, because it gets, it gets tiring, you know? I, as I've said, there's an awful lot I think we as a town can do to improve the way things are going and, and people's comfort level. I don't think we're going to accomplish them in the midst of town meeting. That's just not the right place to get a lot of stuff done. It is a place to get the business of the town done, which means budgets need to be moved forward, repairs that are needed need to be done, wages and contracts and those things, they just need to be done, and we as a town lose credibility when we can't do that. So I mean, I think the, my discomfort with lowering the quorum is balanced off by the fact that I think we need to retain some level of credibility and get the business of the town done without risking people feeling that they're not, their input isn't important or their participation, their attendance isn't important. So it's a risk, but I think I would probably only recommend we reduce the quorum to 75 and hope that not only do we get 100, but that it wouldn't dissipate very quickly and we'd be able to get the business of the town done.
I'll take a couple of questions, because I've seen some hands.
I have a logistical question, I guess more for Charlie, because I think he would know. Where this meeting's already been open, and we called, obviously quorum was called, are we able to change the quorum number on a meeting that's already open?
Yes. Our town council talked to the attorney general's office, and the board and the town moderator can't adjust the quorum in between the sessions. Once we open the meeting tonight at 7:30, the board can't just in the middle, like say at 7:45, decide, okay, we didn't get enough people who are going to lower the quorum. Once 7:30 happens, it's, that's it for the night.
What about the seven-day notice that we talked about in a selectmen's meeting a couple of weeks ago?
That was published on the town's website per the EPA's instructions.
But seven days' notice?
It was seven days' notice.
Before a meeting?
Not at the decision, but the issue.
Seven, seven days before this meeting.
All right. You're, you're saying seven days' notice is.
Before this, before the decision, yeah.
Gentlemen, thoughts? Any?
I'm going to stand for a lot of people who are giving me feedback on why they did not show up to town meeting in Kingston.
That's not connected.
It's not connected. Well, I guess. So the reason that they didn't show up was because their kids just went back to school, and they had crises at home trying to have internet on and off, and their kids were crying, and they had all these things going on while they're trying to do a full-time job. So by the time it gets dark at night, and they got to travel to Kingston, now let's get to the dark issue. We have a lot of people who can't drive at night because of their eyesight. So those people who usually would come to town meeting couldn't come, and there is your lacking quorum last Tuesday. If it had been in Halifax, we would have been able to get a quorum. So bad planning, and I see this a lot, I see bad planning in the fact that we pushed off a planning board meeting and let all of these people, their projects, get pushed off. We had the first day of school, that thing should have been thought of. When is the best notice time where we can get a quorum and plan correctly would be the best way to start planning our meetings in order to be able to have a quorum? Because all of us change up, and we'll do it 12th, we'll do it 29th, we'll do it this day, we'll do it that way, and it's all confusing, and then conveniently the electronic board is down, so it's confusing. There's so many residents that had absolutely no idea today that we had a meeting tonight. And that is why we don't get quorum, is because it's made confusing, that's why. And it needs to be clear-cut for the future, because I see that if we drop quorum, we now live in England, which I think we fought the Revolutionary War to get away from. And it's true, because then only a few people decide what happens to the well-being and the people of the town of Halifax.
That's only if they don't show up.
What about the confusing part? Are we going to forget about that?
So, so.
Well, you just proved.
So the issue has been, from the very beginning, we haven't had numbers from the state. We still don't have numbers from the state, because they haven't passed a budget yet. They gave us numbers to move forward with that they said they would try to make. We've had delay, we've had delay because of those numbers, and I think the smartest decision that we could have made was to delay the meeting so we had the best budget numbers moving forward.
Oh, I don't mean that. I understand that part.
So the pushing, the dates, I, I get the confusion. I am in a school committee or a board of selectmen meeting along with these gentlemen almost every day. We, we had, from March on, we had, I don't know if we met every day, we had daily calls, we had FEMA calls, we had everything. The board has been putting in more time than anybody thought. I know that I'm putting in more time being on the two school committees and trying to get everybody up to speed, bringing information between. I understand everybody's confused. I'm confused. I wake up, I look at the town's website and find out what's going on that day, and I try to attend that meeting. I totally understand the confusion, I understand that last week was the first day of the high grade. I get that. The issue that we were trying to plan for is, if we had more than the two rooms could handle, we couldn't have the meeting in Halifax, because we don't have enough space. So that's why we looked at moving it to Kingston, because that would provide more than the 132 that we have here. So that was the reason that we pushed it to there, because it was a space concern. We thought if quorum gets shut down because not, because more than 130 people showed up, we'd have to close. Now we're back here, because we didn't get the people to show up there. And I understand the dates, I understand all that, but at this point in time, we need to move forward to get this year's business done. We're already six months behind, and I understand everyone's upset, and I understand what's going on in the environment, the unemployment, all those things. I get that, I think the board gets that, and we talk about how the budget changes. Every, every time that we talk about the budget, it changes. So I think we're trying to do the best that we can to provide for the citizens, to allow them to make the decisions at town.
And we're trying to move it forward as quickly as we can, because we do have a problem, we have to get tax bills out. Without tax bills, you can't pay anything. And you, no matter what the date is that the bills go out, folks have 30 days. It's going to be a difficult time anyway, so the sooner we can get them out, the sooner people know what's going on, and hopefully we can generate enough revenue and collections to be able to pay our bills.
Just a couple of things, and I'm going to let you go, because I know we have stuff to do. Thank you guys for doing what you do, especially, you know, Gordon on all the schools, I can't imagine. So first, we do appreciate everything that's going on in the town, and I thank you guys, don't hear that, so that's the first. Second, I guess my confusion with the last meeting being in Kingston was why we had to rush it so far if we had the opportunity to do it tonight. I guess my opinion would have been, we should have just moved from the Saturday meeting to here, and I know we have the taxes and everything that you had just said, but following back to the $6,000 a meeting, I think that's on you guys to say, hey, listen, we're probably not going to get quorum at 7:30 at night on Kingston collection on the first day of school, so maybe we shouldn't spend the $6,000 to play what if, and maybe we should just take the next available and then market that to everybody here, hey, we're going to do it in Halifax. And then my last thing, and then I'm done, is, is Charlie able to maybe for next town meeting, put out some kind of poll or email or some kind of general feedback, whether a Saturday morning works better for people or a Thursday night, because I, I'm not sure if town people have even been asked that, and then you guys can make a better educated decision on quorum and not lacing money.
Just for, for clarity, the Kingston collection was half the money, that was part of it. It didn't cost the $6,000 there plus the detail. Here tonight's going to be $6,000 plus the detail, and I think we have to keep a janitor on too, if I'm not mistaken. So, so there was a little bit of cost involved. The, the whole thing's difficult, even on Saturday morning, which is something you alluded to, we had 117 people, and, and that's still pretty good if we could have kept 117 people there.
Last four hours.
Well, we have another problem in that we have the audio crew, the camera crew, anybody, for instance, our chiefs who don't live in town, they don't necessarily add to the quorum, but they add to the body count. So that was part of the problem. And we, we thought that maybe we might get better attendance at night, I mean, it was a nice Saturday, and you don't know how to plan these things. I mean, it, everything's a roll of the dice.
You got to think of the younger people that are in the town. You got to think about the people that have children.
Do you want to raise your hand, please?
David Masiello, 16, 10th hour.
Thank you.
I don't know if you, you or Troy have children that are in school anymore. That's the point she's trying to make, Tom. Some people have kids that have basketball games and soccer and football and there's things, and I'm not trying to make an argument here, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to help her, make you understand what Saturday means to certain people.
Trust me, I understand, but we had, we had a lot of feedback over the last couple of years about doing a Saturday meeting. So we thought maybe Saturday would be a good day, because we weren't sure how many people wanted to come out during this COVID thing. I mean, everything's a guess.
But we had quorum on a Saturday morning, and maybe if you guys thought to pass over somebody's, tonight, it wouldn't have been a four-hour meeting and people would stay. So I do agree with what you guys said in the beginning of looking at the warrants and not making it a seven-hour meeting, so people don't have that time either any day of the week.
Well, we did pass over a lot of items, but we can't pass over the budget.
So I do agree with what you guys said in the beginning of looking at the warrants and not making it a seven-hour meeting, because people don't have that time either any day of the week.
Well, we did pass over a lot of items, but we can't pass over the budget items, we have to do those.
They got done, right?
Yeah, yeah, but that's as far as we go.
Right.
And then the problem is sustaining a quorum, because people do come and they do leave. People have time constraints, people have jobs to go to, whether it's day.
I'm gonna point out that unless you make a decision fairly soon, you're gonna have a number of people in this room that's in excess.
Yeah, it's getting close.
Can I just ask one question, please?
Sure, I'm sorry.
So, what's to prevent, if we lower the quorum tonight, you say temporarily, what's to prevent next time having, oh, we did it last time, it's okay this time?
It's only under the state of emergency. At any other time, we'd have to be voted town meeting.
So, it was, it was in the, the legislation that was passed back in March or April that the, that the governor signed off on going through, was in the requirements of changing meetings, putting the limitations on. It's just legislative bodies are allowed to meet like this, because once you get hit more than twenty-five, you can't even have a regular meeting. So there, there were all sorts of changes that were in place, and lowering the quorum was one of them.
Thank you.
There's, um, on the town website, there's special town meeting talk. This is not gonna be for COVID, it's just for right now, right? Because how long is COVID gonna go on? I mean, COVID could go on for the next five years for all we know, we don't have a direct end. It might end on November fourth, like some people think, it might, it might be January first, or it might be never. So we're not gonna lower the quorum for more than just tonight or this specific town meeting, because I don't want it to be all of a sudden the special town meeting that we're already talking about, to be also lowered quorum.
All we're talking about is tonight's meeting, that's it.
I would like that to be directly part of the motion, and I'd like to see the Attorney General's determination on it in writing.
Anyway, we need to get this accomplished quickly, please.
Chris Winowitz, one-twenty-nine Circuit Street. I was just, my input is I don't think the quorum should be lowered, because I believe there's a few articles tonight that need a two-thirds majority.
We're gonna pass over those articles.
Oh, okay.
At least we're gonna move.
I was just gonna say, lower amount of people, you don't have a big input from a larger spread of the town, it'd be easier to sway the vote.
The intent coming in was to, to move to pass over those articles. Now, that doesn't mean town meeting will vote to pass over those articles, but that, we've now taken a vote to support passing over those articles that require the two-thirds.
Troy, please.
Oh, sorry, Kirk.
That, that little caveat.
Excuse me.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't, he didn't call me.
Speak to two, two courses. One, I haven't been to very many town meetings in years I've been on this board, that we had a quorum at seven-thirty or sometime eight o'clock, eight-thirty, depending on the weight. It's, the door's open for anyone that can come, and I do understand that people have kids, they have babysitter problems and changes. I sent four kids into the school system while I was sitting doing things for the town. So I appreciate the hardships, but at the same time, you have an obligation, just like to go to vote, to come to town meeting, make sure your business, and stay until it's over with. The quorum last week, we had a hundred-and-seventeen people, all of a sudden, the quorum's down to like sixty, because people got up and left. The last time we did this, and I mean this sincerely, almost three-hundred people showed up to vote it down, and then by the time we got to the real business, it was no quorum. So, you can't dictate as to who's gonna stay and who's gonna leave. People have the obligation, but at the same time, we're obligated to get the town business done. And that's what we're talking about, tonight, to have a quorum, if more than the quorum comes in, that doesn't say they can't vote, their voice can't be heard. We're just trying to get things done, and the best way to know how, and believe me, I've put enough hours in here to understand what goes on.
It's just a dangerous road.
One of the issues about, whatever day you pick, whatever time of that day you pick, somebody's gonna have a conflict. There is no conflict-free day. So everything's the best possible thing we can do at the moment, based on a whole bunch of reasons. So, there's no grand plan here, it's, it's trying to get it done.
You mean, you mean the point that town meeting would still have to vote, whether the bylaws got passed over or not? I think that, to make it clear, I believe that what's being said is that we will pass over them, no matter what.
Well, we can't.
You can't do that, that's, that's a vote of the body.
We can't do that.
We can make a motion to recommend. We, just like every other motion that comes before to pass over or to table, it's a, it has to be a vote of the people.
Well, I also think that the quorum shouldn't be seventy-five, it should be more like eighty-four, the people who showed up to Kingston. It shouldn't be, if, if you're gonna lower it, it should be just for tonight, and it should be eighty-four, not any less.
I think the point that it is, it is for tonight, and I think seventy-five is just a number to ensure that we're gonna finish the town meeting.
So, if we have one person drop out, we can still continue some business. And we may get well over a hundred, I mean, we don't know.
I don't know.
It may be a problem all along, but we have to make a decision, we have to make it right now.
I'm gonna move that we lower the quorum to seventy-five for tonight.
It's been moved and seconded to lower the quorum for tonight to seventy-five. All those in favor?
Aye. Dennis, just to on the record, you were in agreement with this?
Yes, yes.
All right, and hopefully we get a hundred-and-thirty-two. It would be a wonderful thing.
And just as a parting statement, there are, from what I'm hearing through some of the feedback here, recognizing there are a lot of other people not here, maybe not at a town meeting, we probably can improve a lot of the things that we're doing with some support and help from the townspeople, so.
Absolutely.
I'm looking forward to the opportunity to have things be improved in a lot of ways. But I thank you, as another speaker, it's that for your commitment in trying to resolve things in a challenging environment.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna try to move on to some other business here, we've got a little time left.
You got two appointments?
Yeah, I think we have an appointment that's running, where we're running, right? For six fifteen, Bud's Goods?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name's Alex Lazen, I'm with Bud's Goods and Provisions with regards to the outdoor marijuana cultivation on River Street. I would like to request for the board to consider amending the host community agreement and including marijuana product manufacturing in that host community agreement. There's a lot of benefits to both us as an operator and the community with that, and it allows us to sort of make Halifax our, our base instead of the initial plan, which was to grow here and move everything to Lakeville. We're not asking for a larger structure, everything will be in the same perimeters as we initially proposed, but that was something we're here to seek input on.
At first blush, my thought is this is a whole new proposal, we're starting from scratch. I don't know that we can amend something like this, even if.
I would think that if you're going to be doing something like this, you would. First, the host community agreement obviously needs to be amended, because it's very specific to the uses. Two is, I would recommend that you all have another, as awkward as it is, I don't know whether we do it by Zoom, because we may get more than twenty-five people, but whatever means you want to do this is to have another community forum on the subject.
Yeah, I, I think that would be appropriate.
And I have no issue with that.
Yeah, this is not what was presented, this is not what was supported, and this puts a whole different flavor on, no pun intended here, to the whole project, and I think it'd be fair to the community, we need to start over.
Sure.
So, we'll, we'll work towards setting up some kind of a date. Perhaps we could use the.
No, again, it's twenty-five people, you mean the Kingston collection?
No, the gym.
No, twenty-five people. Doesn't matter if it's here or there.
Oh, that's right, it's a town meeting that's accepted.
Yes, that's right, I'm sorry, I know.
We've done Zoom meetings and with other communities.
It would have to be a Zoom, because we.
And it works out fairly easy, and it allows actually more of the community to attend.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's, we're gonna end up having a Zoom, because we gotta get, you gotta have involvement, for sure. And I'm not saying you're just trying to avoid it.
No, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to slide anything through, I, I just feel like from a, to be very transparent with the board, financially, it makes more sense for us to keep everything here. One of the reasons the decision was sort of made is, over the last few months, I know no one's seen any progress over there from us, but we've spent a lot of hours determining where the utilities will come from, lead chain field, septic, where we could build the structure, so a lot has gone into the due diligence of determining how feasible is this parcel of land in all actuality? And we've determined that, you know, we could have the capacity to do product manufacturing there, and ultimately, just makes a lot more sense for us as operators, it's more safe and secure for us, less hands touching it, less transporting it, and ultimately driving higher revenues.
If we look, middle of October?
Something like that, yeah. I mean, we're meeting the thirteenth, and I believe the twenty-seventh. We'll see what we can do for the thirteenth, we need to look at the agenda. The thing is, it would be, either that or we pick a different night and just have a new meeting.
Just do that, I think there would probably be a better way. Why don't you work with Charlie and see if we can come up with a date?
Well, I think I need also, I'm not trying to make fun of Gordon, but give it all the night beings he's going to.
As long as it's not a Wednesday night, I might be able to kick something off.
All right, we'll, we'll do it that way then.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for the wait.
I'm sorry?
Sorry for the wait.
You know, it helps me understand what the town's dealing with when I send out these meetings, so don't worry.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
We're a little late, but we're gonna take our six-thirty appointment, which is South Shore Children's Museum. Want to talk about a drive-in movie night at Walmart?
Yes, hi. Do I need to stand, or can I?
No, you can sit.
Okay. So, the children's museum, I think I sent over the, the slide to Mr. Seelig. We've done this in Waymouth, our partners were the Waymouth Elks, over the summer, we held five of them, and so we sort of had the blueprint for it. We, the children's museum was actually located at the Kingston wall, we were unable to open due to some of the, just the precautions, so we're trying to keep in touch with our families until we can figure out our Plan B. And we wanted to host two movie nights with Walmart. Walmart has supported us in the past with grants, actually more specifically than Walmart, which is no longer there. So the Halifax Walmart has agreed to host the movie night in their back parking lot. I'm not quite sure what the name of that parking lot is, and I actually forgot to send over.
It's the grassy parking.
The grassy parking, I didn't know if there was a specific name, but it's behind the building, and we would like to host a hocus-pocus drive-in. Our crew that usually comes are families with children under the age of ten. And we were taking a look at October sixteenth.
Wait, you were looking at?
Two days, or two Fridays.
There was two, both Fridays, yes?
Both Fridays. The sixteenth, and I believe, is it the twenty-third, if I have that correct?
Yes.
Two Fridays. Just because we, they typically do well, we kind of figured we would accommodate more families. So, we have the movie folks that we deal with is Fun Flix, which is a South Shore company out of Totten, and they do quite a bit of these, they set up the equipment. We will be looking to ask Halifax Police for a detail. I know Waymouth had a detailed requirement, and that worked out really well for us with traffic. We also have volunteers with the Boy Scout troops. We work with two troops, this particular troop was really good at the parking, so it's two-point-thirty-eight out of Braintree, they've just helped us in Waymouth, and since we have a relationship with them, we thought we'd lean on them for the parking, and we typically try to split the proceeds for the snacks and such. So, we're gonna be in touch with the Board of Health too with that. We don't believe we have to do that, since Walmart is right there, but that is basically it in a nutshell, I didn't know if there was any more I could, any questions I could answer in regards to.
Have you just, I don't know, how many people do you think would be attending something like that?
So, I can tell you, we had five in Waymouth, the first one we had eighty-nine cars, and then the last one we had, which was August eleventh, we ended up with forty-nine cars. So we're anticipating, I think, for that space, we wanna keep it around sixty, less than sixty.
Are these pre-sold?
Yes, everything is pre-sold, nothing is, we don't deal with any of the cash, even the candy packs that people purchase have to be pre-bought. So they have to get their, their pizza, and I think we're gonna go to the local pizza place here, just to have them deliver it, everything is gonna have to be pre-sold, including the candy bags.
You're certainly gonna have to deal with the Board of Health to see if they have any concerns. I would think public safety personnel, fire, police, you're gonna have to check in with them, because it could create a, a traffic issue, or maybe not, maybe they don't have a big interest in it, but I think you're gonna have to at least touch those bases. And a fire phone for potential emergency personnel. You're gonna have to show them the layout, so that they know they have access, they can get their vehicles in there, maneuver, those types of things. But you'll find them amenable and workable, so I would reach out to them sooner rather than later. Gentlemen?
Also, there's this question of noise pollution, whether or not tired of the air, gonna disturb the people surrounding it, the whole affair. There's no way you can control that.
The, so, you can take the speakers away, and folks can actually just listen on their car radios, we have a transmitter. So actually, in essence, you don't hear the, the noise from the screen, although we did opt for the speakers in the parking lot in Waymouth, because it was a bigger parking space, which is much more open. But because this is a little bit more enclosed, we can take the speakers away, so it minimizes the noise, and the cars that are participating just basically turn on their FM radios, and then they can hear the sound from that.
What's the timeframe in terms of, what time is this gonna start and potentially?
So sunset is, we're gonna take a look at six-thirty as a start time, but I think in and around that time, it's even sooner than that, it's closer to six. So, we, we opened up the parking lot to make sure that everybody's settled, and that's gonna happen around five o'clock, so that we settle everybody in and everybody gets cozy, gets their pizza from, you know, it's a pickup situation, and then we should be getting started in between six-fifteen, six-thirty, sometimes there might be like a message from the children's museum about some other things that we've got going on. But the movie should be started around six-thirty, and typically, these movies are an hour and a half, tops, so we'd be out of there by nine o'clock. So when Walmart closes its doors, we'll be also leaving.
That would be an appropriate time.
I'll make a motion to approve, have the approval of the fire chief, police chief, and Board of Health agent.
Second. All those in favor?
Thank you. And I'll be in contact with, I don't know who Mr. Seelig is, oh, I'll just be in contact with you after I contact the police of fire. Thank you so much.
Thank you. They're great to work with, so.
Yeah, Toby.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to talk about the recycling events, or do you want to just put that off until Thursday?
Well, I'd like to kind of get them out, because I'm not gonna be here on Thursdays, Fridays, so I'd like to kind of get them flipped out. This is pretty much, this machine right here is, pretty much explains it all, I mean, these are all, they're all fine.
Yeah, see, it's the, single one, and I had to be.
It's the one with all the.
Maybe we can put that one off?
Yes, the single one with all the years, you'd like to put on a Thursday.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with the ones that you're holding in your hand, with the exception of we can sign them tomorrow or the next day, because it's not gonna happen tonight.
Okay, I'll leave it on my desk. Yeah, okay.
Anyone want to move those events?
Some moves to sign tomorrow or Thursday.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And then the other ones with the multiple years, you want to hold off on that one?
Yeah, we'll talk about.
Okay, you guys will talk, okay, that's fine.
I don't think we're gonna go to the charging station.
So, just a question on the charging station, is Drew presenting that to us from his company?
Well, this is what I said to him, is that in a situation like that, we're gonna have to go out to bid. If we're gonna go out to bid, we need. If we're going to go out to bid, we need specs. I understand, you know, he's given us in essence a schematic, the idea, you know, a series of drawings. And that's great. That's, you know, you need to start someplace. But if we were going to go out to bid, you'd need specifications. But I'm also going to be looking at whether there's still funding available from the state for charging stations. There have, there has been in the past, but we need funding, for instance, to hire someone to draw out the plants. It can't be Drew, for instance.
All right. Truck, truck?
Just so you know, we're having problems every once in a while. Chris Winnewich has been very good about communicating with me. I've been forwarding everything to Maryland's Landing. They're trying to really get the message out to the drivers there that if they continue to use those, they're going to have penalties involved. Not from the town, but from Maryland's Landing. Basically, you're not going to be allowed to participate in this or you're going to be fined. Whatever contract you have with Maryland's Landing to deliver materials, you're going to get fined from that, whatever. So I mean, they're conscientious about trying, you know, not ignoring all this.
Has it at least not gotten worse, Chris?
Yeah, it's definitely not worse. And Charlie shared some of the correspondence from Maryland's Landing. And I agree, it definitely looks like, since this was real new to them, finding out this was happening, they're definitely working on it, it looks like.
Okay. Well, as long as they're working on it, I guess that they give them the opportunity here. An update on how Dana wrote?
Nothing really, no. I mean, I know that Ways and Means had asked a bunch of questions. They've got answers now waiting for them to get that out of Ways and Means.
Then that moves us up to any updates on Pope's Tavern Group?
We're going out to bid. Bid deadline will be two weeks from this coming Thursday.
I assume we're not going to go in on executive session?
Correct.
That looks like.
I have an update, not good. We can hold off.
Yeah, I'd like to wait till Thursday.
Do we have it on the agenda for Thursday?
I didn't put, I didn't put negotiations.
So I can hold off the funding?
Yep.
In that case, can I get a motion to adjourn?
To town meeting.
Yeah, to town meeting.
Adjourn to town meeting.
Troy, move that. I say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.